Recording in progress.
City of Rockaway Beach City Council meeting on Wednesday, November 12th, 2025 at 6:04 PM will come to order. The city council and staff want our business meetings to be a safe place for all to attend and share their opinions, a place of common courtesy and civility. As such, we request all people in attendance respect those attending and the opinions of those with whom you may disagree. This will enable our community to establish an environment wherein all issues and opinions may be fairly considered and decisions, though sometimes difficult, will be made in a spirit of mutual respect for all community members, no matter our differences. Please remember that regular city council meetings are not town halls. Their specific purpose is for the city council to conduct city business, and so that everyone can hear, please refrain from talking to those around you while the meeting is in progress. Please place your cell phones on silent and let's stand and recite the pledge of allegiance. Let's record who is in attendance. Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Councillor Conrad.
Here.
Councillor Martine.
Yes.
Councillor McGinnis.
Yes.
Councillor Ryan.
Present.
And Mayor McNeely is present. Before we move into the consent agenda, I want to say that we had an extensive discussion of FEMA and Pickham actions and potential measures that we can take at our workshop. We had presentations from our land use attorney and from our city planner. And so within that context, the chair will entertain a motion to postpone indefinitely the public hearings and business items on the agenda for ordinance 2025-05 and 2025-06 that proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan related to the flood hazard overlay zone and FEMA pre-implementation compliant measures in order to reset the public notice for the process.
I make a motion to postpone indefinitely the public hearings and the business items on the agenda for ordinances 2025-05 and 2025-06.
I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. Well, let me just say, is there any discussion from council?
Yeah, and first of all, I just want to say I'd like to hear from a lot of people in the community on this. When I, when we were discussing the STR cap, I heard from hundreds of people. And there've been very few people with the diverse opinions on this, and I don't think a lot of people know the impacts because I have heard from some people, we all have heard from some people, who say they want a moratorium and no development. That doesn't mean no new development. That means you can't repair your fence. If you're in this area, you can't build a driveway. You can't, the city can't repair sewers. So I want, I want to reach out and let people know exactly what the options are, what the hangups are of each one, what our attorney advice is. And then I want to hear from hundreds of people about this. So please, I'm on the website. You can reach me.
And I would just add, it's, it's in a state of flux. We all know the government shut down. We know the funding issue. FEMA is in a state of turmoil and change. They probably won't, if they fulfill their current timeline, make their final decision until 2027. So we think it's in the best interest, or I think it's in the best interest of the city, to sit tight, continue to permit building using our current zoning codes.
Which is, which is the default. If, if we, if we don't ask this ordinance immediately, we're going, the default is to continue what we're doing permit basis, by basis.
Any other, any other comment? All right, let's vote. Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Councillor Conrad.
Yes.
Councillor Martine.
Yes.
Councillor McGinnis.
Yes.
Councillor Ryan.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Consent agenda is a tool used to streamline meeting procedures by collecting routine, non-controversial items into a group where they all are passed with a single motion and vote. You have before you the consent agenda on the approval of regular meeting minutes October 8th, 2025, approval of workshop minutes, October 8th, 2025, review of financial reports, approval of September 10th, 2025, regular meeting minutes, approval of September 10th, 2025, minutes, and approval of September 9th, 2025, special meeting minutes. The minutes of the previous meetings and financial reports were distributed beforehand. Does a councillor wish to remove any of these items from the consent agenda to be discussed individually during item 11? Items removed from consent agenda. All right, since we have no items to be removed, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
I second the motion.
It's moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Let's vote. Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Councillor Conrad.
Yes.
Councillor Martine.
Yes.
Councillor McGinnis.
Yes.
Councillor Ryan.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, we'll move on to presentations, guest announcements, and I'm excited to recognize and welcome Janine Mack.
McAlvenna.
McAlvenna, thank you, Janine. Meals for Seniors and the Family Fund, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. So my name is Janine McAlvenna, and I'm here representing the Meals for Seniors Family Fund as a board member, fellow and prepared Bruno president. As some of you are aware, the family fund is a program which assists families in need within our communities. In 2024, utilizing our resources and working with the Care Tillamook Program, as well as the family counselors at Nea County School District, we purchased, gift wrapped, and delivered needed clothing and toys for 34 families and 81 children. In addition, provided a Christmas dinner basket, which included either a hammer turkey with all the fixins and a gift card for the parent and or guardian. We also began working with the City of Rockaway Beach and Tillamook P U D to assist several people in our community who needed help paying their water bill bits. Continuing our partnership with the Nea County School District counselors, we were able to identify a need this year. Students who qualify for food during the school year are left without when school is out of session. The family fund set up as kids' summer lunch program. We found six volunteers who met three days a week and filled lunch sacks for our three delivery locations, utilizing our Meals for Seniors homebound delivery drivers for delivery. Students picked up enough food to get them through until the next delivery. Then in July, we were asked to provide additional lunches for a two-week summer school program at Nea County Middle and Garibaldi Grade Schools. Overall, the program, the program began on June 16th, ended on August 29th, and during that time, we prepared 2,405 lunches. Food was ordered through Costco and delivered for free. Working with the health department, we learned no perishable foods may be sent home with the students. So we had a little bit of a challenge there, but we could not have done this without the help of our donors and new volunteers. So thank you, everyone. We plan to send the families identified by the schools an additional basket of food this Christmas, and we are geared up and ready for this holiday season. We'll be selecting families on November 20th through the care program, and we'll receive a list from the school counselors around the same time. We will shop on Black Friday, wrap the gifts the first week of December, prepare the food baskets, and deliver all on the 20th and 21st of December. So we are in need of new volunteers, everybody, everybody, please. And I think, thank you, everybody, for your time, and I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday season.
Any questions?
Questions?
I was just gonna say, years ago, I worked with an organization out in Haylam that did, that did kind of a similar gift assistance program. And one thing that I thought was really interesting is they allowed the parents the option to receive the gifts unwrapped because for the parents, they were very embarrassed that they didn't ever, it didn't feel personal that it was coming from someone else already wrapped. And I don't know if that's something that you guys can consider, but as a mom, like, being able to like, close the door, no, don't come in. It, and it might help you guys out a little bit because then you're not asking all the volunteers to wrap everything. So just, yes, something to think about as I'm thinking about these parents who are struggling to already ask for help, that it might be a nice touch that they, so instead of you wrapping, you just provide them with the wrapping paper and maybe the tape or something. So just, just something to think about.
Thank you.
Great programs. Thank you for all you. All right, we'll move on to staff reports. The chair recognizes Fire Chief Todd Heskey to report for the fire department. Come on down.
Good evening. Audible mayor, city council, city manager, Rockaway Beach. You have plenty of the fire department report for October 2025. Since we missed last month's meeting, I had a couple extra things, so I may be, believe it or not, a little long-winded tonight. I'll do my best. Sure, chill. Take all the time you need. So you see, I will start with calls like we always do. You definitely saw a decrease in October over the previous couple of months. We only had 33 911 calls, which is a significant decrease over the the busier summer months, but we still were out, had 68 different events for the, for the month. So we average still over two a day. Again, medical led the way with just 20, which is pretty, pretty good month. You'll notice our trainings, we emphasize the ladder truck. It's, it's kind of trying to be very proficient with it, make sure we're very comfortable with it. We are incorporating just normal fire operation skills with it. So it's not like we're just driving it and putting the ladder up and down. We're incorporating a lot of our operation skills with it, stretching hose and, and looking at all the different scenarios we can come up against. If you look at the year for date-to-date data, I found, I circled a couple of highlights here on my sheet. It's, we're in 2025. 911 calls were 449 for the year so far. If you look in retrospect to last year's ending numbers at the end of December, we're 422. So we're already, we're 27 runs ahead, 911 calls ahead of last year. With our total numbers, we should easily eclipse 1,000 calls this year for the first time, which is over doubled from when I took over just five years ago. So we definitely see an increased demand on the service we're providing. I don't know whether that's a good thing. People are still calling us. So I think it's, calling us is a good idea. Anyway, we're, we're still answering the call. We're on the beach still. Kind of, you can definitely tell that's slowing down. We only had like three campfires or beach fires we had to put out this last month. You saw the dog biscuit numbers down, garbage down. So you can definitely tell the visitors are down, but we're still out there. We're there during the king tides and, and anything we can get out there. Emergency management update, the quarterly emergency management meeting had, we had a guest speaker from Orem here, and they gave the documentary Rumlings. I know a couple of you were here, the mayor and Mary McGinnis, who were both there present, and Penny Cheek. We, I'm glad you guys were able to attend because I thought it was one of the most valuable little documentaries I've seen. We had people from the state here to answer our questions. It was a very, very well, well-done evening. 14 did brave the storm that night. I know that was a rough night to get a break here, but hopefully we can get them back and maybe do a different version of that documentary, which they said they had, maybe a shortened version at some other time to get everybody exposed to that. Just a reminder, the burn ban has been lifted. Been getting a lot of questions on the smoke in the area. Just let everybody know it is slash burn season, and we are doing, they're doing lots of slash burns. Nothing to be alarmed of. We're usually notified. The state's really good about letting us know if there's going to be a burn in the area. Trunk or treat was held a week late due to the weather. We actually held it on Halloween this year. We thought we were going to avoid the rain and the weather. No good deed goes unpunished comes to mind because right as the event started, it started to rain again, and it rained in buckets. We'll have some pictures of that here in a minute. But there was lots of rain, but we still had, we, we estimated around 100, 100 participants between kids, adults, and everybody was there. And the kids that showed up were well rewarded with, with treats and, and hot dogs and really appreciate the Lions Club and the community members that came out and, and supported that. But it was a good event. I have to thank our two seasonal staff members. They, October 31st was their last day. We had two, Fiera and Shauna did a great job this summer, really helped us fill in those staffing issues we've been having and kept us ready to go all year. See, I think at this point, one other announcement. Santa, I did just talk to him, got phone with him on the, he's going to be at station on December 13th for our annual event. So if you want to mark the date, December 13th, Santa will be at the station. He likes to ride in on the ladder trail, ride in the ladder truck this year and, and we'll hand out cookies and you can tell them what you need for Christmas. It's a pretty good deal.
Do you have a time on that?
You would ask. No, we were just in the planning stage, but my guess, unless I'm wrong, it'll be 6 o'clock. That's kind of our standard go-to. So tend to be 6 o'clock on the 13th. Couple just quick notes. We're working on, we just finished our ISO update, which are for our insurance company, that all the data was sent in last week. They got the last, the questions they had. They're compiling the numbers now. We should know before the end of the year when our new ISO rating will be. I have a feeling this will impact your, has potential impact on your fire insurance rates or your homeowner fire insurance rates. And I'll keep everybody posted when that comes in. Another program, we just actually completed the startup today with, they call the NOX program. It's a, we're going to make this a voluntary program. I had some, actually one of the new businesses in town asked me if we had a NOX program, and it's a program where it's a lockbox. The fire department has very secure keys to, and we have a key that'll open the box that is attached to your personal residence or your business. And I, I can explain how secure it is, but it's extremely secure. And we can open a box on your house that has all your keys in it or your business. So we don't have to break doors, windows, those kinds of things. And so that program, as, as we get a little more used to it, we'll explain some more. If you have questions, I would happily answer them, but it just gives us a way to access your house or your business without breaking the front door down. That started today. The Tillman County Wildfire Protection Plan is moving forward. I brought that up a couple of months ago. We're continuing to meet monthly. We should have the community's plans, including Rockways, in, in the county's comprehensive plan, which will allow us to get some grant funding if we need it to, for wildfire mitigation, fuel mitigations, public educations, anything we want to do with that. Let's see, what else? Oh, and when you leave tonight, there's some great pictures on the wall out here in the foyer. We were able to go to Garibaldi Grade School in September, do some, a public education event, and the kids painted or colored some pictures for us. You gotta see the artwork. It's amazing. We appreciate the opportunity to be down there and, and anytime you get a chance to educate with the kids especially, it's, it's well worth it. Let's see, we're working our accreditation through Department of Safety Standards and Training. We expire in December. We're in the re-accreditation phase right now. Don't see any problem with that. And I don't know if you want me to discuss it now or later, but the engine surplus, you want me to?
Yeah, now's a great time.
Okay. You're going to see ordinance 2025-49 tonight, which is surplus in that engine 21. I, we just, if, for those who would like to know what my plans are to get rid of it or to surplus it, is to see if we can sell it, put it out on the open market for bid as fire engine, see what kind of interest there is out there for it. If there's interest and somebody wants to pay us for it, we would definitely take the money to put back in the capital funds. And if it doesn't sell, I'll come back to the council or we'll figure out what we want to do, look and I can figure out how the best way to get the most value back out of it. So we can be responsible with our taxpayers. See, I think that's about it. Other than I have a short demonstration, I brought fire private feeds and Captain Grace here tonight. We have a new tool. I have to show the council. I just, I'm really proud of this. So guys, come forward. We have a volunteer that would like to sit on this wonderful floor out here. We've got 400 volunteer. So if Bill were to happen to be at home and he had fallen, generally in the past, so just, no, he just, yeah, either way. He can act for. So historically, we've had to use our backs and our, and our shoulders and our legs. And believe it or not, firefighters have bad shoulders, backs, legs, and that. So we looking for any way we can save or, or help save backs, necks, and we, I was at a, a conference about, oh, a year ago, and I met this developer, this tool he's going to show you. So this tool is designed to pick somebody up from a sitting position and pick them up. It's kind of like, call it like a spatula that goes underneath you, and this, so all it's like you show. Anyway, it's a, it's a way to stay back next.
So Chief has seen?
Yes.
I see, I see people cranking, but people stand up so they can see what's going on?
I apologize, if you can't see, yeah, get in a spot, maybe you can see to the side.
Wow, this is awesome.
So it sits in a, like a chair, and it's going to lift you. It's a lift up to a five-hundred-pound patient. It sits up on it, seatbelts in. The developer of this is a firefighter, and, uh, he had a, a mother that kept falling, and he was having to call his old fire station to come pick him up.
Instead of, yeah.
So he developed this in his shop. He welded this thing and made it, and fixed it out to, patented it. And Rockway is the first fire department or anybody to get one of these in the entire nation.
Wow.
This is, this is, this is the first one on the market that came off the line. Here's from Hillsborough. Yeah, so he's local, but that, yeah, but the pushma button instead of your back.
Geez.
It's got wheels on it, so he could get wheeled around back over to his chair or wherever he needs to go. In fact, they could probably wheel him over to his chair and let him sit back down again. Uh, which would be a great way to, but it's one of those tools that, that we've been very fortunate enough, as a council, with the budget you provide, that we can, we can get these kind of tools and, and for our citizens. And with that, I could like say I could talk for three hours, but we're going to call this tonight, and I would be happy um, to answer any of your questions.
Well, I'm going to.
Sorry for this.
Sorry about that. I think that's awesome, and I'm going to look at my fellow counselor, former volunteer firefighter over here, who told me I have a bad back. I was like, we had this a couple of decades ago, probably.
Wrecked my back with a patient after doing CPR for thirty-five minutes.
But it's also a safety thing for the, for the person who's injured or who's trying to get up, because they don't have to worry about somebody not being able to get them up, so that's.
Right, yeah, it, it's, it's very easy to use. I mean, you saw how quick it, you know, it, it sets up and yeah, it saves back and, and time and, and it's safer for the patient too. Chief, will there be a push-in?
We don't get ice cream with this one?
Maybe we'll get some ice cream. We've got plenty in the freezer.
Uh, something else, uh, the, the Santa at the station you mentioned? But if I'm correct, uh, the fire department is also sponsoring, uh, a holiday market on November twenty-eighth through the thirtieth here at the
Yeah.
at the City Hall?
That's a good point.
Captain?
Yeah. What time is it?
Uh, I don't remember what time it starts.
Okay.
The day after Thanksgiving.
Yeah, it's the day after Thanksgiving. We'll, we'll put, it'll be on social media. There'll be flyers up for the time that starts, but.
I think it starts realising, the mind is.
Friday, Saturday, Sunday, though.
Yeah.
There's a lot of.
And, uh, and, uh, so we have a second location out at the International Police Museum also.
So, oh, cool. Now that was just added. Uh, I, I had talked to some people who are helping with you with this, and they, they had told me then that all of the booth spots were full and they had a waiting list, so.
If I, if I've been, there's not too many.
And it's, it's excellent for the fire department to be able to show this kind of community outreach and connect with the community, and it also helps our small artisans and crafters be able to showcase the work they do and make some money. So it's a win-win. So thank you for doing that.
Anywhere you can get a community event, you just take advantage of it, and, and that, that's, that's the key.
A little self-promotion, I'm out of booth also.
And that's a, he's an artist, guys.
Is that a goat, go, go Rockaway? Is that the?
Yeah.
Facilitating, yeah.
As we were talking about all our small nonprofits that we have, that's another one.
Right.
And, uh, and one other thing, with the growth and, uh, the amount of calls that the fire department's making, I think in a conversation with you, you referenced that some of our volunteers are are people who go south to warmer weather in the winter, and if you're short on volunteers, is, is there, oh, would you like to make an appeal for more volunteers?
I think, yeah, absolutely. I, I think that's the key, uh. Yeah, with the, with our increased call volumes and, and staffing, um, a couple of our key volunteers, uh, leave most of the winter. And, uh, it definitely provides some, some huge challenges. In the summer, we can kind of, you know, the summer staff helps, but yeah, I will always make an appeal for more volunteers, and it also brings up the, the discussion too, is we're always looking for when we might need more help in general. You know, it's, it's, as, as things just get busier, the demands get more, um, yeah, be either volunteers or, or more staff is, is going to be needed here. Uh, we can see that next, we're pushing that next. And, and I've always said, I've, I've been a volunteer my whole life, and I, I love the volunteer service, but it's getting to be almost almost a thing more of the past, and unfortunately, the, I will go kicking and screaming to keep the volunteers going though, and that program operational, but yeah, definitely always evaluating our needs and looks for sure.
Have you and the city manager started discussions about more staffing?
We always talk about all kinds of business in the fire department, you know, in general passing. Yeah, we've talked about some stuff, nothing concrete, just, you know, different ideas. Always got to be creative in this, in the, in the, in a small government situation and be efficient with the, with the money we do have, so yeah, we, we have a good conversations and, and, uh, very open about needs and wants and, and, uh, if we get something that's more concrete, we'll definitely bring it back to the council and, and go through the, the chain of command. But thank you for bringing it up, because I think it is a subject that probably needs to be opened up.
I was just going to say, um, I would love to see just more social media push about these things that we're getting, and as we're, you know, I mean, the chair, and I understand that it's new, but I, I also think that as we're trying to push for more volunteers and more help in the community, I think one of the strongest ways for us to do that is to have a stronger social media presence where you're going to attract a lot of that younger generation, and I think that putting these things out and people saying, well, that's kind of cool, like, I want to kind of go check that, you know? I think that it, I'm, I'm hopeful that maybe it could help a little bit in, in that.
Have a, a good push on that. We, we put, that, that chair was on the, our social media.
Okay.
We post, we try to post something every week.
Yeah.
We don't want to do too much, then it gets, but we try to get something up there, what's going on, happening this week, whether it be training or new equipment or spotlight somebody's achievements. We try to make sure.
Even just when you guys are out and about or doing a train, you know, and it's, and it's, I think it's important to also think about sharing those out into other groups. Um, just community pages, because it's going to broaden what you see. You know, I mean, obviously I have liked the Facebook page of the fire department, and it's, it's easy for your algorithms to get all screwed up and for you to not see it, so.
So I, I guess, a, an example of how social media does work is we posted a, a issue with the sailboat that
Yeah.
beach last week, and, uh, we just posted the information that says you don't need to call us, let us know that the boat on the beach, we are aware of it. Everybody's been contacted. Um, I talked to the captain today. That has over two hundred and fifty thousand views on it. Over a simple, "Don't, don't call us," okay? And it got shared, I can't remember how many.
Two hundred and eighty-four.
Two hundred, yeah, two hundred and eighty-four shares and two hundred and fifty thousand views on a simple, "Don't call us." So, so we, we do know the power of social.
Who's hearing us, but more, "Don't contact us," and then they run.
Don't volunteer. But we, we do try to, every avenue we can. That's why we try to be active at all community events. We try to be as, as out there in the community. We lobby folks all the time if you're in our demographic, which means anybody here, um, we're looking for, you know, the help we can get, because it's a vital service, uh, that needs to be taken care of. When you call nine-one-one at one in the morning, you definitely want somebody to show up.
Definitely.
And, and that's what we're trying to meet all the time. Sometimes it gets pretty challenging. You know, nobody likes to get out of bed at three in the morning unless they have to, and, uh.
Do we still have a cadet program?
No.
Okay.
That is something being, but, but again, that goes back to, it takes staff to be able to do it, and we've talked about it, but we, we don't have the available staff to add back into that program, because we see the need for it. We, we're dealing a lot with the schools right now. We'd like to do, like their FNRL program, like to do some wildland training, which we've offered, and we will do, but it still takes time and effort to make that happen.
Yeah, I know that their fire school has been very popular with the kids.
And so we've got to take that fire school to the next level, and not just give them fire school, but actually give them a certification.
Thanks.
We're, we're going to give them their, their certification, so then they go, their team graduate, they have a certificate, they can go to the forestry department and actually get a job already trained, ready to go. So that, that's our goal, is to get it to that next level. Anyway, thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you. I think there are a couple of quick, we're going to give you a wait, but wait, there's more. It's like a three o'clock, we just bought knives commercial. There's that, but wait, there's more. I got a short, several pictures of the trunk or treat. Um, I just thought there were some cute pictures here that I thought I would share with the council and, and the public that'd like to see. This, this is one of our, uh, up-and-comers. You know, this is a new recruit we're working on. He might be six, but you know, we're going to get him signed up. Um, you want to keep that, you know, yeah, you can just kind of fill it with Mario Brothers. Yeah, the mousetrap was probably my favorite. And we are, it's one of the cutest costumes I've ever seen. And you can see the drive of brain here. It came by. Uh, and again, thank you to the Lions Club. They donated the hot dogs for our event, and we're great, always been great community partners. We really appreciated it. Um, and then we found a job for Ryan, when the wind was blowing, he could hold the tent down, and he did a very, very good job at it. Yeah, and just a couple of pictures here of the, of the, the ones that braved the rain to come out and set up and hand out treats, uh, was you can see on that last one, I gotta go back one real quick, Melissa, you can notice that standing there holding the tent down, because if you didn't hold your tent down, it tried to go into the next parking lot. Uh, anyway, and then a, a night picture of the ladder. Um, we've been, like I say, been practicing with that a lot. Uh, it lights up like a Christmas tree, uh, which is really pretty impressive, so thank you though for your time, and the chair. Yeah, I had to show a picture of the chair, uh, which you got to see tonight. So thank you guys though for your time tonight, and if you have any questions, my door is always open, so.
Thank you.
The chair recognizes Deputy Kevin Grogan to report for the Rockway Beach Resort. Follow that.
Okay. All right, good morning, council. I present to you tonight the support for October twenty-twenty-five. Starting with some good news, October brought a noticeable decline in criminal cases, which is a plus. Um, that is also freeing us deputies up to remain active in the community through patrols such as traffic enforcement and ordinance enforcement, uh, which is also keeping us busy and keeping people under meet the speed limit. So some notable calls for services this month included restraining order violation on South Coral Street. Evidence was collected and forwarded to the district attorney's office. A juvenile was caught, uh, by Nia County High School staff with an illicit substance. Uh, disturbance between family members was reported on South Anchor Street. It was determined that no crimes were committed. An assault was reported at Nia County High School between juveniles. This case was referred to the juvenile department in Tillman County. An unwanted person was seen multiple times on property on North Pacific Street. Deputies were unable to locate the said individual. And just a note from the sheriff's office, um, daylight savings time, it's darker quite early, so make sure that all your lighting apparatuses are fixed and in good condition on your vehicle, make sure that everything's properly functioning. And the proper lighting allows for increased visibility and excellent weather and low lighting. And I will take any questions if there are.
As soon as any questions for Deputy Grogan?
I just thought it was unusual that you said an unwanted person.
Unwanted person? Yeah, it's just how, how it calls him in. It could be construed as, you know, maybe trespass, burglary, a whole bunch of things, so.
Just never seen that terminology.
It's brand new. Um, I have seen the, the patrol cars out and about in town so much more than previously, and some of that may be because you're not needed as much down at the wayside as in the summertime or whatever, but thank you for being out and about, and I live off of South Second Street, and I, I did get blasted a few times by the speed limit thing, and I now slow down, so it's very effective. And I just was wondering if you're going to move it around town, so other.
So we usually take requests, if anybody has any places they'd like to put it. Um, non-emergency has been very popular. Um, uh, over here on South Second, also very popular, just because people come zooming up the highway up that hill as fast as they can, so we do take recommendations, and if you want a place to put it, just let us know.
We've had a person already asked for it over off of, uh, Nahalem.
Nahalem?
And we have a, it's a little blue car, a blue pickup that races up and down Nahalem. It's new in town.
Um, I was just going to say, I, yeah, I just appreciate seeing you guys out and about, and I think kind of the same thing that the, all the council is hearing is we're just, people are driving so fast. And the other thing that I've found very frustrating is people are not stopping in crosswalks for people. And I, you know, I, I know, and I have heard from multiple community members that, um, I think it's uh, Northeast Nineteenth, that crosswalk. I, I mean, it's, it's scary how fast, and they are just bombing through it, but I'm seeing it there, I'm seeing it here in town, and I don't know if now that we're in a little bit of a more off-season, if it's a little quieter, if we could do maybe a crosswalk enforcement at some point. Um, just because, yeah, it's, it's what I'm hearing, it's what I'm seeing, and it's, it's been one of the biggest complaints, so first of all, thank you for being present. Continue for the public to see you, but if we could maybe put like a crosswalk enforcement out, that would I think that would help to show the public that we hear them and we're, we're doing our best.
And if anybody has any questions or concerns, our email addresses are available. We have personnel to contact us. It doesn't always have to be through you. They can contact us throughout the day, non-emergency, our email addresses, whatever they need, so.
If, I don't know that I have like a card for me, guys, if maybe each of the councils could get, yeah, if, I, I know I would appreciate getting a card, but if we could just maybe get a few cards that.
We could put a stack up.
We would love that, and then that can help us to direct the public as to go, we'll just stop by City Hall, they've got their cards. Um, yeah, that would be wonderful.
And again, we're here seven days a week, so.
Beautiful. I, I have any, any leads on a fourth deputy?
I, I'll forward all those questions to Under Sheriff Kelly.
I, I think our law enforcement, um, situation here with contracting with the sheriff's office is a new model in Tillamook County for a whole town to do that. And, uh, so the more information we can get out about it, I think the better it is for people.
All right, thank you very much. The chair recognizes Public Works Director Mary Mertz to report for Public Works.
All right, so it's November, and it's raining. Um, yeah, so we had our first king tides and our first heavy rains of the season. Uh, that is the first time we've had king tides, and our new wayside beach access, uh, has been put in, so really happy to report that whether the storm just, we had hoped it would. Um, our staff did a really good job keeping close eyes on both the beach accesses and all the creeks that dump out into the ocean during those king tides, so, um, it went surprisingly well. Um, and then with the heavy rains, we also didn't see any flooding in the Coral Street area. Like to attribute that, at least in part, to the flood mitigation projects that the city's been doing. Um, obviously, it's having a really positive impact for our community. Hopefully with the next king tides and heavy rains, we have, we see the same thing, so um, really happy with the results of that storm project that we've been doing down there. Um, and as the council already knows, tonight at their workshop, we had our engineering firm, HDR, uh, present their rate analysis, um, that's looking at, uh, cities' needs, um, options for how we can proceed, um, to get our rates at a place. options for how we can proceed to get our rates at a place where they need to be for it to be sustainable for the future. So we did get some consensus on what those rates will look like. And I'm going to be putting together another public outreach flyer that shows how we got that analysis complete and then what those proposed rates look like. So everyone who receives a sewer bill will be getting yet another informational flyer about our sewer rate study. And the next time we'll be seeing this will be next month with the city council. We'll have a public hearing at that time. And our new rates are likely to take effect in on the first of January. Then you would actually see that increased rates in the January, February utility bill that you receive. On the next slide, it's just the FAQ. We didn't get a ton of response to the information that's been gone out. I received three emails from the public so far. But these were a compilation of questions that has been raised, really valid questions about why we're doing the study, what the money's going to go towards, why we're not using tourism dollars. So I hope everyone had a chance to look at that. And I hope it was of value to the public. But we'll be sending out one more with this next month. And then once rates are finally in place, we will send it out. Thank you about that rate study. And then North Pacific, this is our big infrastructure project we have going on down on North Pacific. If you've been down there, you'll see the road is beautifully torn up right now, new water lines, sewer lines going in. The contracting company that we have working on that project is just starting to do service connections. Today, actually, they did a hot tap, which is when you cut into the line. So this is the section of the line that they cut out. Public Works was very impressed with how beautiful that looks. So I brought that for a little show and tell for everybody. And so over the next few weeks, they're going to start installing all the individual service lines to the property. And once that is complete, then we'll actually connect those new water lines to those new service lines. To do that, we'll have to turn off the water temporarily. So we'll do a notice to all the property owners in that impacted area to just let them know, hey, your water's going to be turned off in in a week or so. And then we'll direct them to the city's website, where we'll actually have like up to date information of like what hours is going to be impacting which residents. And the really good news, like this project is going really well for us so far. We're slightly ahead of schedule and under budget, which for Public Works is always wonderful. And that's allowing us to do some additional stormwater infrastructure improvements to that area, keep as much water off of that road as we possibly can. And then on the next slide, this is just a notice that went out to the property owners about the project, the kickoff dates, when it was going to be happening and what's going into it and what they have to look forward to. So this, over the winter and fall, we've got all the infrastructure, everything going underneath the ground. And more than likely, since the rains are coming pretty early, we'll actually have to probably wait until spring to repave that whole road. But we'll get that as soon as the plants open this spring is our goal right now. And then Jetty Creek, my favorite project to work on. The city is working on acquiring its drinking watershed. So right now, we are working with Nuveen Natural Capital. They are the landowner of the lower half of Jetty Creek's watershed. So the city has been working for quite a long time to acquire the lower portion, eight hundred acres. Five hundred and ninety-five of those acres are inside the watershed, two hundred and five are outside. So we received just under one point five million dollars in funding from OWEB. And we're using that money to do like all of our due diligence work, to do appraisals, to hire attorneys, to do everything that you have to do to be able to acquire this land and to find a value price for it. So that's where we're at with it, working really closely with those grant administrators in Sustainable Northwest. They are the company who's kind of guiding our project forward. They've done a lot of this work before. And are bringing just great players to the table for us. So really happy to be working with them. And to see this project move forward in such a productive way for like the size of a project it is, it's really impressive to to see it moving forward at the speed it is. And to that end, we should be receiving our appraisal by the end of next week. And then our attorney that we've brought on for this project is currently drafting an option agreement to bring to Nuveen and to the city council to be able to potentially buy this land. So you'll, our goal is to bring this to the city council at your December council meeting, this option agreement. So a lot of moving parts, moving very quickly, but bringing that option agreement forward. It'll keep us in line with the LOI that the city's already signed with Nuveen and hopefully keep us on the right path to acquire that property for the city's benefit. And then my last little piece of news, Public Works is hiring. So we are currently looking for both a utility worker and a plant operator. You'll see that in the newspaper, on the city's website, and on some other websites as well, where you can generally find some good employees. And hopefully we find some really good staff. Our guys are working super hard. It's hunting season, so they're also personally very busy. But we have so many moving parts and big projects going on. They could really use the support. So hopefully find some really good staff who stays with the city for a really long time, like most of our staff does. And then we are also working on putting together a professional services agreement for code enforcement. Doing that instead of trying to find somebody who could fill in part time as a code enforcement officer and then part time as a public works employee. Finding somebody who fits both of those things is really a challenge. So instead, we're going to go for a professional services agreement to fill that and hopefully start meeting the city's needs for enforcement in our community. That's what I have for you.
It's a lot of, it's a lot of projects. And I want to mention when we talk about Jetty Creek, that this has the community has been involved all along in this. And we're on our second Citizens Advisory Committee to work on this. And I see two people, Nancy Lanyon and Lydia Hess, who are on that committee that are present today. And they have a meeting. Luke is probably going to talk about this in his presentation. But but they have a meeting this week, so I won't say anymore about that. And it's, they're always public and they're on Zoom. And yeah, so the public is definitely invited for their input.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Comment, though, I I appreciate all the information that's gone out regarding the rate increases and those of thrown up in my utility bill, like clockwork, and I've got them sitting on the the counter at home and they're loaded with information. But I think you also said that if folks were looking, they could find them on our website.
Correct.
Correct.
Yep. So on our homepage, there is a button that links directly to all those flyers, as well as to the recording of the first presentation that HDR did at a city council workshop. We'll also link the additional workshop that you guys just had today to that page as well. So all of the information will be readily available right there.
Right. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you very much, Director Murray.
Thank you.
All right, the Florida City Manager Shepard.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So with the the tabling of the two public hearings and all the associated action items, we're going to have a pretty short meeting tonight. Also, I'll have a pretty short presentation for you. Let's see here. So we've got two resolutions tonight. First one is Resolution forty-nine declaring the fire truck surplus. Chief Hesse talked about that. It really doesn't make sense to continue to maintain that truck, keep it operational. So we're going to get the most value we can out of it for the city. Then we've got Resolution two thousand twenty-five dash fifty, which adds a provision to the city manager's employment agreement, my agreement with the city. And it provides some employment stability relating to termination and severance during the six month period that follows, swearing in of new council members. And kind of acknowledges the political risk with with this position. The council discussed it at their workshop last month. I just want to thank the mayor for raising the issue with me and and the council for considering it. It's, it means a lot to me. And the language is in the resolution. And then almost the last slide, I I have to congratulate our city recorder, Melissa Thompson, sitting right here next to me. About a month and a half ago, she, at the Eugene Annual Conference, she was given the Oregon Association of Municipal Recorders City Recorder of the Year award for two thousand twenty-five. And that's, yeah. It's, it's a big deal. There are a lot of, a lot of very hardworking and wonderful city recorders across the state of Oregon. But this year, they determined she was number one. So that's, that was great to see. Yeah. And I just, I just wanted to read a little bit from the nomination letter the mayor and I submitted on on behalf. I didn't get a chance to do this at the conference. So I'll just read the last two paragraphs of it. So in just two years of the city of Rockaway Beach, Melissa Thompson has successfully implemented transformative changes across our organization. Her organizational expertise and cooperative spirit have helped guide the city through a period of significant growth. Through her leadership, commitment to excellence, and adherence to the highest standards of ethics, she truly sets a benchmark for municipal, the municipal recording profession. She's truly amazing. And we believe the city of Rockaway Beach hit the lottery the day she applied. So Melissa, on behalf of the city of Rockaway Beach, congratulations and and thank you for everything you do for us. It's much appreciated. Thank you. All right. And finally, we have our our public meetings calendar. I think when I was putting it together, I didn't have the dates for San at the Station yet. But November twenty eighth, we have our our tree lighting ceremony. And like Councilor McGinnis called out tomorrow night or tomorrow afternoon, we have our second or third Forest Stewardship Plan Advisory Committee. We also have one in in December as well. And I believe that is, that is all I have for you all tonight.
Any questions or comments? No counselors?
What time is the coffee with the mayor? I encouraged a few community members to come and they were like, what time? And I was like.
Nine o'clock.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the public comment on non agenda items. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has four minutes to speak. Our governing body takes the input into consideration. However, in observance of Oregon Open Meeting laws, this isn't the time for dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city manager is taking notes of action as needed. The electronic egg next to our city manager will count down, giving speakers a one minute warning by turning yellow. I do have the signup sheet. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raise hand icon, and we will add you to the signup sheet. Do we have folks watching remotely?
I call my team, too.
Anyone else? All right. The Chair recognizes Ron. Please approach the podium, state your full name and indicate the city of your principal residence.
Hey, I'm Ron Hambari. I live at eighty-two hundred Magold Street here in town, and I am representing the Lions Club today. This goes back to the missed meeting. We did the trunk or treat and we had three years and we really appreciate the city letting us do that. And I really appreciate whoever found my hat and gave it back. And the fire department came running when our awning started to go, you were in there. You remember. So we just want to thank you guys for helping us and letting us just. We gave away a lot of hot dogs and would have given away more had the rain not tried to take the awning away. Thank you.
Thank you. And my wife, I did enjoy the hot dogs. The, we recognize, I recognize Art LaFrance. Come on forward. State your full name and indicate the city of your principal residence.
Thank you, Mr. Trump. My name's Art LaFrance. My wife and I have a place a block or two from here on Anchor and Fifth Avenue, backing up on Clear Lake, which is sometimes occupied by beavers, which brings me down a point here. Although I've been taking notes on prior speakers, and it's very clear that if I come to you again, I will bring some beavers in with me and I will be dressed in an appropriate costume and see if I can improve on my presentation. I want to make five points quickly. By way of background, August nine, a pickup truck with two gentlemen operating it with a winch approached the Beaver Dam on Clear Lake and tore it down. Subsequently, the city itself has also torn down the Beaver Dam. And this has happened now for several years, and it's been a continuing concern for my neighbors and for my wife and me. Let me, because I have now less than four minutes, let me suggest five points that I would like you to consider very quickly. One is, we would like a sign placed next to the property adjoining the Beaver Dam, which simply tells members of the public that they are not to tamper with Beaver Downs and certainly not attempt to destroy them. It's contrary to state policy and in my judgment at least, contrary to city law. A simple sign would be much more welcome than the confrontation that we had with these individuals on August nine. Secondly, rather than tearing down the Beaver Dam, what I would suggest, and I think a simple study will give us the answer, what would be the optimum level to maintain Clear Lake? So that people who have concerns are satisfied, but so that water is maintained at all time for the beavers and also for my neighbors and myself, so that we are not one morning confronted with a mud flat where the night before there had been a beautiful lake. Simply a study of the optimum level, which should be maintained, and then adjusting the Beaver Dam appropriately, rather than the present approach. Thirdly, I would think and request that studying a proven technique for automatically regulating the level of the water where there is a Beaver Dam by means of a diversion device would be worthwhile. They have been employed elsewhere. There is literature on them. I would be happy to work with whoever undertakes that study if it is undertaken, as I certainly hope it will be. Fourthly, my neighbors and I would like to have us more directly involved with the city as it proceeds in the future. Notice that there's going to be a tarragon. Would be, I think, polite and welcome. Creation of a committee to study the role of Beaver Dams and the approaches for them. A committee, and perhaps there is already such a body, to look at the place of beavers in wetlands generally. I understand the subject of some concern to the city council. All the literature on wetlands is clear. Beavers are a keystone member of every wetland community that has ever been studied or approached. They are not a pest. They are not an annoyance. They are an important constructive member of our communities. And then finally, let me close with this. My hope would be that the approach of the city of Rockaway would be proactive and constructive, viewing beavers and what they do and their place in the community, much as you have the place of the Big Tree Preserve, which is a wonderful asset, speaking well for the community. But my point here is what is ignored is it is a wetland. It is a magnificent wetland, and it teaches, I think, the opportunity we have to stop. Beavers. Next time, I'll bring some with me.
Thank you, Art.
The Chair recognizes Jerry Stanfield. Say your name and indicate your city of residence.
I'm Jerry Stanfield. I live at nine eighty-two South Harbor Street. I am the president of the Lions Club. And I'm here today to thank the mayor, the city council, and the city officials for allowing us to be next to the wayside with our weenie wagon and sell hot dogs and caramel. I'm going to give you a brief what we do. This spring, we gave seven scholarships to the high school seniors for ten thousand dollars. We have our baskets, our holiday baskets. We do Thanksgiving. We did twenty-four families, fed them all week long, plus a holiday dinner. Christmas, we did twenty-six families, fed them all week long, and gave the kids toys, stuffed animals, and two ten-speed swing bikes. Girls, they have what they call a backpack program. The research officer at Gallup at the grade school gives them the kids' names that are in need of stuff. They were thirteen this last, last year. They, the girls went to Fred Meyer's and got backpacks, thirteen backpacks. Give them to the research officer. She gives them to the kids so they can have something to put their books in to go home. Give them to the research officer and she gives them to the kids so they can have something to put their books in to go home. Every Thursday at eleven-thirty, they contacted the parents beforehand, took food to the houses, to every one of these and delivered them, all thirteen kids, and gave them, when they get home from school, they'll have a square meal. So that's what we did with the weenie wagon, money from the weenie wagon. Without that, these programs would not be possible. So I, again, I thank you so much for letting us be there and we're looking forward to this next year. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, the chair recognizes Michael Weisenflue. Uh, state your full name and indicate the city of your principal residence.
Okay, you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, Michael Weisenflue, Rockaway Beach. Um, I know that the city council is going to soon be talking about short-term rentals and potentially looking at, uh, changing some of the rules surrounding STRs. There's two areas I hope the council takes up. First is perpetual transferability. The council inadvertently set up a two-class system in Rockaway Beach of haves and have-nots, properties that have an STR license and properties that do not. So people that own property without a license now, or someone buying a property without a license, may be forever shut out of the opportunity to operate an STR because existing properties with alliance, with a license can just pass it along to the next person for that property. That is patently unfair. To exacerbate that, according to the city, there are a hundred and twelve STR licenses that are not being used. That represents twenty-three percent of all current licenses. When the city was setting a cap last year, there was a rush of new licenses before the cap went into effect. And there are many properties that have a S, have a license just so they can sell it later with a perpetual STR license attached, but have no interest in actually acting as an STR themselves. More on that later. Rockaway Beach is the only, only jurisdiction that allows perpetual transferability. I'm asking that the council change this. I think you don't have to look any further than what Tillamook County did. They allowed current STR licensees a one-time transfer. Then transferability goes away forever with one exception. That exception is to allow transfers within families so that properties that are handed down for generations as vacation homes can continue to be operated within the families as STRs. This protects family homes generation, generationally as they are passed on to children and their children, et cetera. Now for item two, the hundred and twelve licenses, licenses that are not being used. Unused licensees are gaming the system for the current perpetual transferability and the hope to sell their property at some point in the future with an STR license attached. This is unfair for three reasons. As stated above, they are gaming the system on the hope that the golden ticket the city has given them will result in a higher sales price, a quicker sale, or both. Secondly, the city nor the residents and visitors of Rockaway Beach are getting any benefit of the revenue from a, uh, STR license that, um, is not being used. And most egregiously, number three, they're taking, uh, the place of, of people who legitimately want to operate an STR. There's currently thirty-six people on the waiting list for an STR license that the hundred and twelve license setters are boxing out. That's a travesty. To solve this problem, the city should institute a use-it-or-lose-it ordinance. If you don't rent your STR out for X number of days for some X period of time, you'll lose your license. I hope you see that these two changes are reasonable and based on facts and consistency with others jurisdictions. Uh, and one final note, off-topic. Want to remind people, there's a holiday bazaar at City Hall and, uh, the Police Museum, November twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and thirtieth, uh, presented by Rockaway Beach Fire and Rescue and supported by Go Rockaway. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, um, we'll move on. Consideration of Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Five Forty-Nine, a resolution declaring a fire truck as surplus property and authorizing the fire chief to sell the fire apparatus. This resolution declares fire truck engine twenty-one as surplus and authorizes the fire chief to sell or transfer the surplus property. Um, the public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Person speaking shall address their comments to the council as a whole and keep their comments to four minutes. The electronic egg next to our city manager will count down, giving speakers a one-minute warning by turning yellow. Um, I have the signup sheet. Uh, do we have anyone joining us remote, or anyone who is joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raise hand icon and we will add you to the signup sheet. Do we have anyone watching remotely who would like to speak? All right. We have nobody, uh, on, on the signup sheet and we have nobody remotely. Uh, so we'll move on and the chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approved Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Five Forty-Nine, resolution declaring a fire truck as surplus property and authorizing the fire chief to sell the fire apparatus. Move to approve Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Five dash forty-nine. Second?
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approves Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Five Forty-Nine, a resolution declaring a fire truck as surplus property and authorizing the fire chief to sell the fire apparatus. Is there any discussion from council? Uh, since there's no discussion, let's vote. Council President Cheek?
Yes.
Counselor Conrad?
Yes.
Counselor Martine?
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Um, the, uh, the, the motion passes unanimously. Um, consideration of Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Five Fifty, a resolution adding a special provision to the city manager's employment agreement. The position of city manager comes with a high degree of political risk, particularly in small cities. The risk peaks during the six months following the swearing-in of newly-elected council members. Proposed contract amendment adding payment of severance regardless of cause during six-month window after a newly-elected council member is sworn in is a common way to provide some security. As your mayor, I want our current and future city managers to be protected appropriately from politics. I fully endorse this provision. Um, the public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. The person speaking shall address their comments to the council as a whole and keep their comments to four minutes. The electronic egg next to our count, city manager will count down, giving speakers a one-minute warning by turning yellow. I have the signup sheet. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raise hand icon and we will add you to the signup sheet. Do we have anybody remotely? Um, uh, given that, I don't have anybody on the signup sheet. The chair, uh, the chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approved Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Five Fifty, a resolution adding a special provision to the city manager's employment agreement.
I move to approve Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Five Fifty.
Second?
I'll second.
Uh, it is moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approves Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Five Fifty, a resolution adding a special provision to the city manager employment agreement. Uh, is there any discussion from council?
Uh, no, this, I just would say this is something that was an oversight that, that should have been done a long time ago. It's very common, uh, in, uh, top government management positions to have this provision. And Counselor Ryan used to be on the school board here in Neakani and most superintendents have a provision like this. So it, it just catches us up with best employment practice and things.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I agree. It's pretty common in, um, this level of position and, and roles. So, uh, it makes perfect sense and glad that it's being done.
Yeah.
All right, since there's no further discussion, let's vote. Council President Cheek?
Yes.
Counselor Conrad?
Yes.
Counselor Martine?
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Uh, the motion passes unanimously. Well, that, uh, brings us to council comments and we'll begin with Council President Cheek.
Good. Well, I really don't have a lot of comments to make tonight. Uh, thank you, everyone, for showing up and sitting here waiting for us to make all of our decisions. We appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Uh, Counselor Conrad?
Um, I mean, we didn't get to talk about it last month, so I just want to touch back on the push-in ceremony. And it was very well organized. I think it was well attended and it was exciting. I think my favorite part was just getting to see the kids super excited for, you know, I mean, a fire truck, but like a ladder truck is like a fire truck, especially to like little kids. So I thought that was really sweet. And then I just had a note here about Melissa and her award. And I just think that we're so blessed and so lucky to have her. I know anytime I've had questions or anything and I send off an email, almost immediately do I get an email back. Um, and a big thank you to our seasonal firefighters. And then just, I think I kind of bring it up every time, the new businesses here in town is just, it's just wonderful. Um, we've got Big Sean with the Smash Burgers and, um, I'm frequent flyer of his Mueller location and, uh, now it follows me home. Um, and then we got the chance to go and eat at, uh, our new Pelican location. I took my daughter in there and, uh, we both were just blown away at how, how they utilized that space, because it's not a very big space. And my daughter said, "My brain like almost can't handle how it looks so different, but yet so the same all at the same time." But they, it was great and there was a good group in there and, yeah, I'm just so grateful that the city is booming in the way that it is and that we're addressing problems like, we need more parking, so, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Martine?
Okay. I've had three knee surgeries in the last seven years and I'm expecting another one in January. But they, all the time, they've always said, get rid of throw rugs. Don't have throw rugs around your house. I just, I, I don't believe that. I'm, I'm very careful. Well, three weeks ago, I got up about eleven-thirty to go into the kitchen for something and we had a new throw rug in the kitchen, throw rug out there. I nailed it. I went down, dropped like a log and, and then I must have scratched my knee and I landed on carpeting. Looked at my knee, I had ripped a hundred and eighty degrees across my knee, just like a watermelon that broken. And, uh, in fact, I've got, I went in to see the surgeon again today and he would only take two of the ten stitches out. I've still got two more stitches left to take out because he, it's so gnarly where they ripped my leg out. So watch out for throw rugs. Long story short.
All right, thank you. Um, all right, we're going on to Counselor McGinnis.
Well, I also want to honor Melissa Thompson for her award. I've been on city council before and after Melissa. They're like, there's a before and after. And we had, when I first joined, there was like a blank time when that position was empty. And, uh, seeing her come in has made everything so much easier and more professional for us. So thank you, Melissa. And for those of you who don't know what a, uh, city recorder does, um, she's also our city elections official. And, uh, city recorders don't necessarily have to do this, but Melissa is our assistant city manager too. Um, Mills for Seniors and Lions Club have both already spoken about the service they give to the community and thank you very much for that. Actually had a whole write-up about you. I didn't know you were going to be here, so I'll just skip that. Uh, and, um, but it points out all of the kind-heartedness and giving that our community does for people. And so I want to, uh, point out Kim and, and Steve Tackett at Simply Charming. They are, uh, that's a store on Main Street here. Uh, they are collecting Christmas gifts for children and maybe some older people too. And they call, they just, they don't have a fancy name. They just call it the annual Christmas celebration. And they've been doing this for six years. You can go to Simply Charming, Charming, or there's a box out here in the foyer, uh, and donate, uh, a gift. They will be taking drop-off gifts until December the twelfth. On the evening of December the twelfth, they can use a lot of volunteers to wrap those gifts and you might talk to Kim and just some not be wrapped. And, uh, then parents and families can pick those gifts up on December thirteenth. And then also, they did, Kim and Steve at Simply Charming did a winter coat giveaway. And it has ended because, and I didn't get to mention it because we didn't have our October meeting, but I went into the store and she said they have a few coats left so parents can still go in and get some children's coats for free. And one more thing, Kim and Tim, or Steve do, uh, is they, uh, will give away free feed and other items for pets. And they take donations from the community to support that and pay for that. So any of those things you're interested in, go to Simply Charming. Um, and, uh, then I also want to mention the Hope Chest Thrift Store. About a week ago, they started a pop-up food bank in their entryway and their entry, they, they're in an old bank building and their entryway was where the ATM machine is. So they can leave it unlocked and still lock their store. And, uh, so they have it open twenty-four seven where you can go and drop off food or people can come and pick it up. And they say that's been enormously successful. And Green Coast Market now is accepting SNAP so, uh, people could go there and get some discounted food. So I, I just think, um, we're very fortunate to have all of this. And, uh, and I'm, I'm sure there's a lot more in the community that I missed and I don't know about. But, uh, thank you to our community members for all the support they give people. Um, Rockaway Beach Business Association, the RBBA.
Can I just jump in here? Because I, I just want to add on to that, Grumpies and Smash Burger have doing a pay it forward. So you can go and make a donation and then they will give away a free meal to people who don't, aren't, aren't, are, are food.
Insecure.
Insecure, thank you. That's what I was looking for. Um, so just.
No, thank you for that because I knew there would be things I know so much.
Thank you for letting me drop that in. Grumpies and Smash Burger.
If you're hungry or you would like to donate, either way, go see them.
Yeah.
And the Rockaway Beach Business Association, better known as RBBA, has started hosting a First Friday. And on the First Friday, you can go to their featured business and if you spend at least twenty-five dollars, then you get a gift certificate to a participating restaurant. And, um, last month.
Coupon.
A coupon, yes, it's a coupon. But for the, for the participating restaurant. Uh, last month in October, it was Beach Crafters Mall. It was the First Friday store. And the participating restaurant was a fan favorite in town, Rick's Roadhouse. And, uh, they've already done, RBBA has already done their drawing for the Green Coast, uh, for, for December. And Greece, Green Coast Market is the participating store for First Friday. And I'm not sure about the participating restaurant, so it will be a nice surprise for you when you go spend twenty-five dollars at Green Coast Market and then you'll see what restaurant you get the gift certificate for. Um, I also wanted to talk up our, uh, community holiday market. This is the first one we've had in Rockaway, so people need to know about it. And I'm glad to see it has expanded so large that it takes up two buildings now. And, uh, another community member, uh, Trellarys, um, did some research about what restaurants will be serving meals on Thanksgiving Day and has posted that on Facebook for any travelers or other people who are looking for a place to eat. And, um, want to mention our downtown improvement grants. If you have not noticed the bright purple paint on the Seabreeze, you haven't been looking. They get, not only did purple paint, they did windows and doors. And, uh, Sand Dollar Restaurant got a grant to make an outdoor ADA accessible patio and they've now poured great concrete and, and made a, a, a eating area out there. And so I, then, then there's many more, I'm just mentioning those two. Yesterday was Veterans Day and I want to thank all the veterans in Rockaway Beach for their service. We have many veterans and, uh, and then they don't often get recognized for the work they have done for our country. So thank you, veterans. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Uh, Counselor Ryan?
Well, I'd first like to say, uh, thank you to the city for, uh, a group of us went to the LOC conference, the League of Oregon Cities Conference, uh, back in early October. Uh, and it was interesting to sit in a small city session and find out that whether you're a small city or a medium or a large city, you've all got the same problems, they're just a different magnitude. But the things that came up were transient room tax, wetlands, FEMA, flood planes, parking. I go, oh, that's, that's us, that's us. And they said, where are you from? And I said, Rockaway. And I, and everyone sat up because there is a lot of good things going on in Rockaway. Folks out there are aware of what's going on here, um, and not just the local communities, um, but across the state and, uh, and, and organizations that grants. but across the state, and, and organizations that, grants that are coming here, funding that is being provided to let us do this work, and as we heard from all of these comments here, it's a group effort, and we, we're almost unique in the ability to do that, and there's an energy and a community support that people out there are very well aware of, so kudos to all of you, is what I say to that, so glad to be part of it.
Good, thank you. All right, due to scheduling conflicts, we did not hold a coffee with the mayor and manager in October, but the next coffee with the manager and the mayor and manager is Thursday, November twentieth, as City Manager Shepard referenced. We hope you'll attend, as it is an opportunity to meet your neighbors and share your thoughts on Rockaway Beach with City Manager Shepard and me, and it's been very gratifying, a number of things that have bubbled out of those meetings have moved forward and had an impact on our community, so please come and share your thoughts. As has already been said tonight, and I'll repeat it, Rockaway Beach is experiencing a surge in new businesses in our downtown core, which is a testament to our growing appeal and vibrant community. Smash Burger, Sassy Rocks, Thai Food, Artisan Gallery on Miller Street, Green Coast Market, Blue Water Fine Art Gallery and Pelican Brewery are those that we've seen join our downtown core recently, and there's more that have joined us on the north and south end of town. But we have not had enough increase in visitor parking to support this growth. Simply said, Rockaway Beach does not have enough visitor parking to support our growing business economy. What are the consequences of inadequate parking? First, safety hazards. Inadequate parking often leads to illegal and unsafe parking, such as blocking walkways, driveways. This creates hazards for cyclist pedestrians and emergency vehicle, further diminishing the overall experience of our visitors. Traffic congestion, a lack of available spaces forces drivers to cruise for parking, increasing traffic congestion and fuel consumption. This adds to air pollution and makes the destination less pleasant for both tourists and residents. A poor visitor experience, searching for a spot can cause frustration, waste time, and add stress to a visitor's trip. A negative first impression can harm a destination's reputation and decrease the likelihood of repeat visits and positive reviews. The American Hotel and Lodging Association's twenty-two-four State of the Industry Report emphasizes the importance of parking, pointing out that it affects overall experience and therefore repeat bookings and visits, and affects reviews and ratings. Last, but also I think the most important problem is lost customers and revenue. If visitors find parking to be difficult or inconvenient, they may choose to completely bypass our city and go to a different destination altogether. This results in lost revenue for local shops, restaurants, and attractions that rely on tourist traffic. The International Parking and Mobility Institute estimates that each on-street parking spot adds twenty thousand dollars, twenty thousand dollars in revenue to local economies. But I want you to know, the city is planning to kick off a project to identify and deliver additional parking spaces to support the growth in the number of visitors stopping in Rockaway Beach to shop and eat. In the meantime, council will work to preserve our current inventory of parking, which may mean moving some previous wayside events to Phyllis Baker Park to keep the wayside open for parking. We must make sure that decisions to turn the wayside from a parking lot to an event space return value to our merchants and restaurants, and not just reduce the number of visitors who can park, shop, and eat in Rockaway Beach. Now, I take every opportunity to share all that is wonderful about Rockaway Beach, it's the most fun thing I do as your mayor, but I wouldn't have these opportunities if we didn't have such an awesome community. My thanks and gratitude to our business owners, our residents, our counselors, our leadership and staff that work collaboratively to create a welcoming and vibrant community, and you've heard a lot about that tonight from the other counselors. If you do have ideas to share, questions, concerns about what is going on in the city of Rockaway Beach, or what you are hearing or seeing on social media, please email me at cmcneely@corb.us. I would welcome the opportunity to meet with any of you. Thanks for your time and attention this evening. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn our meeting? Motion to adjourn. Second?
I second it.
It's moved and seconded, let's vote. Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Conriff.
Yes.
Counselor Martine.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, we are adjourned at seven-thirty, Wednesday, number thirteen, twenty-two-five.